At this point, is everyone ready?
Yes.
All right, so at this point, I will go and open up the Ballin Park City Council Special Meeting. Today is April 15, 2020, and the time is 5:05. I will open up the, let me read out, before I do that, I want to go and have the city clerk, Ms. Gina Ayala, read off the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Yes, President, he's muted. Ricardo Pacheco, can you hear us? You're muted. Okay, go on to the next one.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Okay, I'm present.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Thank you, and Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present, thank you very much. So, at this point, I also want to believe, I'm not certain if she joins us, our City Treasurer, Ms. Maria Contreras, if she...
She'll be at 7:00, Mayor.
Oh, she will be joining us at the 7 o'clock. Thank you, City Clerk. All right, so the items that, well, at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Not certain if we received anything.
Nothing received.
The City Clerk, Ms. Gina Ayala, just said that there was nothing received to be placed on the record. The items that we do have are the, on the list are the, number one is the recessed to closed session, which is a conference with legal labor pursuant to 54957.6.
Yes, now you can.
Agency Designated Representative Employees Organization. Then we also have item two, which is a conference with legal counsel existing litigation. And item number three, which is a real property negotiation pursuant to government code 54956.8. And we also have a conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. So there's four items. So, at this point, it appears that we are going to go into closed session. We don't, or we do have something, sorry about that. The open session, which is the fiscal year 2020, the budget update, Parpom presentation by Rose Tran, the Finance Director. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to give a couple words in the beginning, and then let Rose go ahead with the presentation. Thank you all, Mayor, and City Councilmember and staff for being here. As you know, these are extraordinary times due to what's going on in this pandemic. There's a lot of closures, there's a lot of people off work, there's a lot of unemployment. The city's projected to see a drastic reduction in sales tax, at least for the next quarter, possibly longer. You know, there's talk of recession, the stock market just saw one of the worst quarters in history, and that also leads to purse costs going up due to their investments. So, all of these things are almost a perfect storm for budgetary problems and uncertain times. So, we want to be very cautious, and we're going to give you some projections towards the end of the year, and then we can talk about possible solutions and fixes to that. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Rose.
Yeah, well, let me, before you begin, the legal counsel, Robert, says he is hearing us. I just text him and advise him, if he needs to say anything, or we need him, what he can do, dial my number, and then I'll place him on the mic here. But before we go on to the budget, we obviously also want to look at so many things that are currently just shared with us, Shannon, and we're going to definitely have to look to canceling all the concerts that we have planned for the year because of the distancing and multitude of different things out there. So, we're definitely have to look at that. So, a lot of the recreational activities that we've had are most likely going to have to be canceled. And of course, we'll talk that at the end, but I want to at least bring that in there because I know part of that is the budget as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right, all right, so at this point, Rose Tran.
Mayor, can you hear me? This is Robert.
Got you, Robert, I just got your info. Yes, can everyone hear the legal counsel?
I'm back on.
Thank you, already, okay. All right, Rose Tran. Are we in communication with everyone? Mark, can we, can we get Ms. Rose Tran on, please?
Mayor, she may need to unmute herself.
Okay.
She may, she may need to unmute.
Rose, you are mute.
I am, I am on now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm going to present you the budget update and year-end projections for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019 and '20. Next slide, please. This slide will show you the general fund operating overview updates, and the total projected revenue as of June 30 will be $29.3 billion, with a decrease of $4.9 million because of the COVID-19 impact on the economy. Comparing to the original adopted budget, and we projected a $5.1 million decrease, and with the relocation of the sales tax received from the successor agency previously, and give us $220,000 in revenue increase, which will decrease the total impact to $4.9 million. The total projected expenditure will be $33 million. Comparing to the original adopted budget, it gives us a decrease of $1 million due to the remove of the previously transfer out of $2.1 million from the cannabis revenue. So, this will give us the total projected $3.9 million deficit as of June 30, 2020. And we will give you a greater detail in the following slides to provide you what brings to these numbers of revenue decrease and expenditure decrease. Next, please. This slide will give you a greater details in the revenue projections, and please let me know if you have any questions on this slide. It shows you the decrease in each category. Any questions on this slide?
Yeah, Rose, can you just kind of walk us through it? I know it's, we could see it, but for those in the public, I think, just kind of, all right, thank you.
We projected 30% in the property taxes. We don't have a big impact in sales tax in other area because most of the property owner, they pay their property tax on a monthly basis through their escrow account, due based on the county's projections and the expert's explanation. Therefore, we have about 30% impact on the property tax. What you see on this screen with all those decreases mainly is from the impact from March through June. The city has been received all, or most of the revenues as we previously projected as of February 28. Therefore, all those decreases you see here mainly from March to June. And the sales tax, you will see the basis we use in our calculation in the next slide. And also, the property tax in lieu of VLF, we projected 30% decrease. Franchise fees, we projected 20% decrease. And business license, we projected about 50% decrease. And also, the license and permits, the decrease is mainly due to the less constructions. Also, fines and penalty, the decrease is due to less traffic on the road. Use of money and property, the decrease is due to the delay in the sale of property purchased from Caltrans to next fiscal year. The TOT tax, we projected 90% decrease due to very little occupancy in hotels. Also, the charges for service, we expect over $1.3 million decrease mainly due to the $1.9 million in cannabis mitigation fees from 15 received to A projected. Previously, we projected 15 received, and now we revised our projection to A permits. We also increase, we also have an increase of $437,000 from the new billboard revenue from Burton Display, and $180,000 from engineering fees, which help us to reduce the decrease in revenue a little bit, for about $500,000. Any questions on this slide? If not, we can go to the next slide.
Rose, quick question.
Yes.
What did you, what did you say the billboard funding was? Is that in miscellaneous?
The billboard is under the charges for services, under that category, above the miscellaneous.
I see, okay, thank you.
Yes, the billboard new revenue include in that category. Otherwise, we would have $1.9 million decrease in the revenue because of the new billboard revenue came in, it helped us out. Any more questions? So, we provide you this slide to show you where we base on our sales tax calculations. As you may see, I also provide you the HDL's projections, and I use the city's projection because it's a little bit more conservative, and also, it fits more of what business basis we have in this city. For example, the auto and transportation with HDL's projection, they have a decrease of 12% in the first quarter and 55% decrease in the second quarter. And based what I seen on the road, and I projected 70% decrease. Also, with the restaurant and hotel, they projected 60% decrease. And we have also talked to some hotel in this city, and so, we projected 70% decrease instead of 60%. Any questions on this slide? If no, we go to the next slide. This slide will provide you the detailed information for the general fund expenditures as of June 30. And by category, we have personnel cost, maintenance, internal charges, contractual capital, and we projected a $138,000 increase in the personnel cost. This mainly due to, the personnel cost here is including the whole city and every department. So, that's why you see that number there, but it's increased mainly due to the overtime from patrol, but still, much less than last year. And the maintenance, the, that small increase in maintenance is mainly due to miscellaneous repair and maintenance. For the internal service charge, the increase is due to the updating of the new phone system for Citywide, and also wiring of the network cable, which originally approved by the City Council after we adopted the annual budget. The contractual services increase is mainly due to the legal fee related to the Irwindale move and free speech coalition cases and various PD litigation. For the increase in the capital category is due to the second floor renovation, and also, $25,000 we set aside for the PA system update in the council chamber. However, we can save that $20,000 for a later year since the council chamber PA system is still working. So, this, we also, I also want to mention to you, we have a decrease in expenditure for $2.1 million that you see here. It's mainly due to the previous cannabis projection that I set aside since we projected to receive less revenue coming in, and I removed that set aside of $2.1 million. So, the bottom line for the total general fund expenditure projection as of June 30 will be $33.1 million with a decrease of $1 million.
Rose, this is, Rose, so we're looking at a deficit of about $1 million, is that what I'm hearing?
No, this is only showing the expenditure.
Oh, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, we're showing a total decrease in expenditure of $1 million, which help us out in the decrease of revenue and help us out in total deficit.
Thank you.
Rose, I think when we get a couple slides down, you'll see the real number there.
Rose, this is Paul.
Yes.
Couple questions regarding the personnel for the police department overtime. And this is perhaps a question for the chief as well. That, is that amount also going to be covered under the, you know, the state grant that's reimbursable?
No, the answer is no, sorry.
So, the overtime...
You may see a better number in the next slide for the police department.
Okay, and then in regards to the internal charges, is there any other project that we could delay or not do at this current time? More so than just the, you know, the capital improvements for the PA system. The question I also have, I guess this is also for Shannon or someone else, is regarding the second floor improvements, are there other items there that we can, you know, put a hold on now that, unless we've already started them, that we can stop for the time being instead of moving forward with them? Unless they're necessary, and I mean necessary as essential.
I can answer that, Paul, this is Shannon. There was very little general fund expenditures in the capital improvement program. Unfortunately, the second floor remodel was probably the largest, and that contract has been let, and it's substantially underway and being completed as we speak. There were some phone system upgrades that went along with that, too. We may be able to delay some of that, but that's probably it. Most, most of the rest of the projects are special funds. However, we do want, and I've already started discussions with Public Works to look at those projects because we do expect possible decreases in gas tax, Prop A and Prop C. Those also could fall, so we need to make sure that we're not spending money that we don't have in those projects.
Thank you.
Next slide. So, this slide is also showing the detail of the expenditure by department. And you, as you may see, under the admin, we have an increase of $176,000. This mainly due to the Irwindale move lawsuit payout under administration. That's what the major increase causing admin department here, and plus, yes.
Sorry about that, was that money that came in from the lawsuit that, or not? Was it what we paid out?
These are the money we pay out.
Wasn't there money going to be coming in from the lawsuit as well?
Yes, Mayor, that, this is the money we've paid out so far. We're in the process of trying to recoup some of our costs because we won that first go-around. However, a lot of that is, a lot of the courts have been put on hold, so we don't know what or how much that is going to be. So, we're, I don't know, Rose, if you included recouping any of that or left it all out for now, since we don't know.
Actually, we have spent about $1 million in this lawsuit, and the dollar amount you saw here is only what we have paid in the current fiscal year. We started paying that legal fee a couple years ago, and I was told by Robert, this case is almost done.
And Rose, we should be recouping some of those costs. I know you had those discussions with Robert. I just don't know if you included any of that in your revenue projections or not.
I don't think, and I don't believe, we will get the reimbursement back by June 30. If we don't get the reimbursement back by June 30, I, and I cannot include in the projection.
Now, you know, Rose, let me ask her, or Shannon, whomever, yeah. What, 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 I know that lawsuit that we won, what is the projected amount towards mostly received, or recoup, I should say?
I think Robert probably has a good grasp on those numbers if he's ready to speak about that. But I think what Rose is explaining is that if we do recoup those costs, it will come in after July 1st.
Right, so it's...
It won't be booked in this budget year.
Right, right, and I hear you. Thank you for that, Rose.
Mayor?
Yes, legal counsel. I'm just asking a hypothetical question, and I realize it's not going to meet the June, as Rose was saying here, but I was just kind of curious, that's the amount, but go ahead, legal counsel.
The rule of thumb, Mayor, is it's usually around half. Now, I've seen it go up to 70, 80% of what you asked for. You never get 100%, but the rule of thumb is, you know, 50, 60%.
Right, that's fine.
And I think if, I think if I could just interject as regards to any reimbursements we may receive through the federal government, FEMA, or the state, it's unlikely that those would come in by July 1st. So, it's unlikely they could be booked against this current year.
Right. Okay, Rose, go ahead.
Okay, the next one, the increase for community development is mainly due to the legal fee that we pay for the free, for the free speech coalition cases and Darwood Medical Office building, since those legal bill is paid under community development, and we have to include that in here. If no question, I go to the next one. And under finance, we have a slight increase, as I mentioned earlier, is due to the Citywide new phone system and cable wiring. It's about $9,000 increase that allocated to finance department. And Vice Mayor Paul had a question about the police. And as you may see here, under the police department, we have about $437,000 increase is mainly due to the overtime for the patrol. However, compared to last fiscal year, we are doing much, much better. And also, under this increase, it also includes the forest overtime case we pay out to the police department in November. And under public work, and the increase is due to the second floor renovation that the construction is already started. As Shannon mentioned, we only contributed a small portion from the general fund. It's a little bit over $100,000. The other increase is for the Citywide phone, things like that. We have to allocate that cost to every single department. And for recreation, the increase is including the $20,000 PA system replacement, and also, the miscellaneous repair for the building and maintenance, and also, the internal service charge. And under the non-departmental, you see a big decrease there. The main decrease is the $2.1 million that I previously set aside from the cannabis revenue. Because of the revised projection, we have to remove that $2.1 million from here. And this is the slide showing all the details of the departments. And if you don't have any questions, I can move to the next slide.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. Couple questions, Rose, and this is probably also for the chief. I know that we have some, soon to have some vacant positions in the sergeant and lieutenant ranks within the police department. If we were to continue to move forward with those, would that assist with our overall, you know, reduction of overtime as we move forward? And the second question is, do we have a sense as to what the COVID expenditures are that are, you know, above and beyond than what we normally would be and what we would likely apply for reimbursements at a later time?
Did you, is this for the chief?
Yes, sir, and Rose.
A few comments. I think it's important to point out that we've got 74 items, and for the most of the year, we've operated a little over 68 officers. And so, we have a lot of money in salary savings. Now, I haven't had time, obviously, to go over the budget in detail, but it looks like, from my perspective, it's about $1.8 million, and that we're going to come well under budget. To answer your question, yes, we're, you know, the focus from day one was to reduce that overtime, and I think we've done a good job.
Yes, I agree with that. Yes, I agree with that.
And as far as the COVID is, the numbers are known, although from day one, we developed a form to capture every single hour relating to COVID. But I couldn't tell you what that number is or how quick we'd get that number. Now, my experience with FEMA, I mean, we're still trying to get money from the Thomas fire when I worked Santa Paula. So in my world, that timeline is more than one to two years. And from my experiences, the reimbursement could be anywhere from 75% up to 96%. And anywhere in between.
Yes, I understand that. Like, as I stated, is, and this is a question more for Rose as overall finance healthier, is I'm trying to understand, you know, what our burn rate is for the COVID expenditures and efforts that we're moving. And then again, you know, if I could ask Chief, if you could, you know, really look into, you know, those positions, the sergeant and the lieutenant positions and, you know, evaluate those and see if, you know, what is needed as we continue to move forward as we're looking for, you know, short-term, you know, cost savings that could help us out, not necessarily now, but also, you know, when we start the next fiscal year. Because, you know, things are kind of probably going to be changing as you can imagine. So thank you.
Oh, Mayor, if I may. Counsel Pacheco, Mayor. Hello, Mayor.
Sorry about that. Go ahead, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Okay, thank you. This question for the chief. I know that a few meetings ago, we talked about a reorganization and changing some of the positions and the cost savings that that would have. Is that something that you're going to bring forth to the council to implement so we could see the cost savings there as opposed to moving people into, officers into sergeant and lieutenant positions?
Thank you for the, for the question, Councilmember Pacheco. I would say now, more than ever, it's more important to reorganize the department. Because like we laid out, we're looking at a savings anywhere from 1 million to 1.4 million. And so I think now more than ever, we need to move forward with that plan, that reorganization.
Chief, I'll mix up. Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say, so Chief, those positions replace those individuals at an exempt status, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, their salaries, they're not going to be incurring any overtime.
No, sir.
Okay, thank.
Okay, Mayor, I just had a follow-up question for Rose. Rose, so what we're looking at on this chart that you have up here is at the last column, that's how much revenue you have anticipated that would be as an increase because we haven't finished the year?
Oh, actually, the slide you're looking at now is for expenditures side, it's not for the revenue side. We are talking about on the last column is the projected increase or decrease in parentheses.
Okay.
Actually, the police overtime has been going down due to the few of less of police officer. The overtime is mainly coming from the patrol, police officer.
And if I could add.
Go ahead.
If I could add, this is Shannon, I think the chief's done a really good job since he's been here reducing overtime. But just remember, for this entire fiscal year, he's only been here a short time. And then, as Rose mentioned, there was a bump in the overtime due to the settlement of the, the Adams versus Baldwin Park overtime case.
Yes.
Okay, so if I understand this chart correctly, we adopted, as said under administration, 1.7 million. And you subtracting the next two columns and that's how you get the final column?
The final call is in the column that shady in gray.
Okay, so you have, you have an adopted budget of 1.7, you subtracted 1, 1 million?
So if I could, if I could, Rose and Councilmember Pacheco. So, so yeah, if you look at the column adopted annual budget in the bottom line was 34.152 million for the entire city. And then Rose, in the next column, it's expenditures to date. And then using those expenditures, we're predicting where we'll be at the end of the year. And although there were some increases, minor increases in each department, it was offset by the shift of monies from non-departmental that Rose had set aside. So it actually brings us down to a projected expenditures of 33 million, a little bit less or 1.014 less than what we originally projected. So that's good news, that's good news. However, in the previous slides, you saw that our revenue, the money coming into us has decreased even more. And when we get to the next, the next two slides, we'll really wrap that up and kind of show you the bottom line.
Okay, all right. So you started with 34 million, 34.1 million?
Yes.
You've used 20 million of it.
As of March.
And then you're projected to the end of the year is 33 million. So you have, I guess, what did you, you saved about 1 million? Is that what you're saying here?
Correct.
All right, you might, you might want to retitle the page, but okay, I got it. Thank you.
Next slide. So this slide will give you the details of all the transfers out as I have provided in the past. We always subsidize from general fund for the parks maintenance and also the prop A parks and summer lunch. And also, we still have a one bonds that outstanding for the community center. So this gives us the total general fund transfer out of $800,000. Previously, we also have the 2.1 million set aside transfer out. With that, as you may see from the previous slide, it helped us to decrease of the total expenditures because of the previous 2.1 million set aside that we had when we previously prepared the original budget. Any questions on this slide?
Councilmembers, any questions? If not, we'll go to the next slide. Thank you, Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. This slide will give you the overall pictures for the last 10 years. As you may see, the general fund reserve has been going up and the city has been doing well. And we just finished our audit for this past fiscal year. You saw the reserve jump from 8.4 million to 9.4 million. That's mainly due to the cannabis revenue we receive. And the set aside I have put into the budget project preparation in the prior year and give us 1 million extra to the general fund reserve. Unfortunately, due to this COVID-19 impact on the economy and with the projection, our general fund will go down for about 4 million dollars.
If I could, just on top of that, and you'll see that actual number in the next slide. But, you know, this is a very good picture of why the council was wise to put a money away over the last 10 years and to build up the reserves with Rose's help. Because it's a little depressing if you look back and see that, you know, we did work very hard, we built up the reserve. But it's possible, you know, to do, due to something like this, seven years of, of hard work and savings could possibly be, you know, wiped out in six months or a year. So go ahead, Rose.
Okay, if we don't have question, we can go to the next slide. And what Shannon just mentioned is a great point of putting money aside. This will provide you the summary of the city's projected revenue and expenditure and the projected deficit of 3.9 million. Any questions?
Rose, so the projected surplus deficit is at 3, at 3,886?
Yes, that's the projected deficit. The original adopted budget, we have about $20,000 surplus without this COVID-19 impact.
Right, and it's understandable, of course, yeah, because of the, what's happening.
Mayor? Counsel Pacheco. Okay, so we're, we're coming in, at the end of the year, we're going to have this deficit, 3.8 million, 3.9 million almost?
Yes, that's the projected deficit or projected number. And we will continue expecting impact for the first quarter and second quarter of the coming fiscal year.
Okay, and from the city manager and staff, I mean, how do you see how we're going to make this up? I mean, is there, are we looking at some cutbacks or stopping other projects? I mean, how are we going to make up this deficit?
So, and that's a good question. And so, you know, this is based on where we're at now and what it looks like through the rest of the year. So there've always, already been some things talked about. The council had expressed concern about hiring. I put up informal hiring freeze on all positions. I know the chief has his organization and we're going to discuss moving that ahead to make sure that we'll save money for the city. The mayor mentioned canceling some of the events coming up. We need to look at that very carefully over the summer, possibly canceling 4th of July and some of the other concerts and street fairs. Now, things may be cleared up very soon, but all those events cost money and they take planning. And also, just, you know, listening to the county health officer speak today, the plan that they're looking up to reopen the economy, it, it, it's not just going to be, okay, it's July 1st, everything's back to normal. Things are going to open up very slowly. They're still going to be very cautious about how many people can go into stores once they open. They're going to still ask for social distancing. So it's sort of going to be a slow enrolling of things. So we'll want to look at postponing events, concerts. We, we're going to have to look at those programs. We're going to have to look at, as was mentioned, the telephone system. We can probably save $100,000 there. We're in negotiations and I'm going to talk to you more about that in closed session. But we may have to, you know, look at other extreme ideas to help close the gap during the end of the year. And part of this presentation is to show you where we're at, talk about some of those ideas and then, you know, open it up for some discussion and counsel in that, in those regards.
Mayor?
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, yes, sir.
Well, I, I could tell you in the 20 years that I've been on the city council, I mean, we've never been in this drastic position. We're, we're looking at a historical event that has taken place throughout the world that has put us in a dire position. It's, it's not going to get any better. The experts are saying that this is going to be prolonged for probably a year until it gets any better. Our revenues are not going to get better over the next year. They're going to continue to grow in a downward spiral. And I, I think we really need to take a, I'm sorry. I assume we really need to take, have another meeting and take a look at, just, you know, looking at the budget for the next year and this year to make sure we're moving in the right direction. And if you're telling me at June 30, we're in 3.8 million dollar deficit. You know, I, I, I think just stricter measures are going to have to be taken. We should have a meeting next week and continue talking about, you know, ideas that the staff has to reduce cost. I just don't see future hiring. I, I think, you know, just a lot of things are off the table. Union negotiations and so forth, there's just going to have to be a lot of restructuring in what we're doing. Anyways, go ahead, Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
This is Alejandra.
Alejandra, sorry about that.
That's okay. I, I couldn't agree with you more. I absolutely agree that we have to look at all the programs that we do have to offer. Although they're excellent programs that our community does enjoy, we do need to look into cutting all these programs onto further notice so that we can get back on track. As Councilmember Pacheco said, this situation, we don't know exactly when it's going to end. So it's just better to be cautious and do schedule another meeting so that we can further discuss all the cutbacks and get ideas from staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to add also Ricardo Pacheco, I think hit it and really good target there. As I think the last time we had to face them like this, Ricardo, was maybe about 15 or 20 years ago, where we had to make some drastic, drastic choices and, and we may be looking at that as well. And at this point, at the same time, looking to see what potential refunds or where, or where the economy goes or what transpires in the next couple of months and so on. But it's definitely not going to be something that's going to be resolved overnight. We, we obviously know that part, so thank you. All right, Councilmembers, anyone else wishing to share anything?
Mayor, this is Robert Tafoya.
Yes, Legal Counsel, Mr. Tafoya.
Thank you, Mayor. One suggestion that I have that I've been working with Shannon on, well, it's not my suggestion, but, you know, we're, we're working on it together, is the potential to sell permits for home delivery. We're looking at that and I believe that it is separate from the distribution. So we're not going to run into any problem there. And I know sometimes that takes a while, but we put together that cannabis ordinance in, you know, less than two months. We could put together something like this if the council were to be interested. And then, you know, maybe we can, you know, by the end of the year, get some additional revenue in as it relates to that home delivery permits.
You're, okay, I, I think, and so, yeah, we're talking about the delivery, right? Is that what we're saying? The cannabis delivery?
Yes, Mayor, home delivery, home delivery.
Excuse me. Okay, home delivery. Yeah, and I, I think that's something we need to explore. We could probably even discuss that as Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco was mentioning here. So we decide that we want to meet next week, then maybe that's something we should bring up for discussion as well, as a part of this whole solution.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, followed by who?
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Garcia.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be brief. Yeah, Mayor, you're right. A few, what, 15 years ago, you and I on the council made a lot of very difficult choices that we had to do to reduce, you know, a lot of the cost. I think we're at that point, literally drastically, to cut back on a lot of costs. But at the same time, what we didn't have back then was there are opportunities for revenue increases, you know, one, the chief of police has brought up the restructuring, you know, our attorney in the area of cannabis, there's a lot of opportunities that we can look at. So, so I think we have to do a balance of, of looking at cutbacks because that's immediate and looking at long-term and what we could do for revenue building. The economy is obviously going to be restructured over the next year. When you listen to the governor's message about his six-step plan to, to get back to, you know, normal, but it's going to be a new normal. We have to help the businesses to be able to get back on their feet. A, a lot of them will probably not make it because there's so much restructuring. But I'll talk about that at the end. I, I'm agendacized for it, but to talk about that sort of planning. So I just think we need to sit as a council and really come up with a lot of new innovative ideas to move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this point, Monica Garcia.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say that if we're going to start to have conversations about delivery, let's be as informed as possible and make sure that we understand what revenues other cities have gained from this type of business in their community before we, you know, from this type of business in their community before we, you know, start to move too quickly in that direction. I think that, you know, when we first embarked on this cannabis manufacturing, distribution and cultivation, we had a certain, you know, perception of what the revenues would be like from this type of use and I don't think that we have seen that materialize in the way that we had expected. So I would just say, you know, of course, we do want to look at all revenue sources, potential revenue sources. I think we also want to be, you know, realistic about what those sources could look like as we, as we consider this. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Monica Garcia. Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, member, vice mayor, excuse me, Mr. Hernandez, sir.
Thank you. You know, echoing everyone's comments, my only concern is that we take a measured approach. And we do look at, you know, obviously, everything that's underneath, everything, including the kitchen sink. The one thing I would ask is, you know, for us to really understand, you know, where those cost savings are, because I'm going to be very realistic. The biggest expenditure that we have in the city is personnel. So, and, and so that's, that's, that's the reality. So if staff is looking at or if the council's looking at, you know, how do we reduce our, one of our biggest expenditure, that's going to be with our staff. And, you know, I want to be very careful in regards to how we do that or even begin approaching that conversation. You know, if anything, I'd be more open, you know, as we begin this conversation as to things that are temporary versus cuts. You know, cuts are something that's, you know, it's hard to bring back versus something that is temporary. I do believe that the economy will come back. However, that will probably be done, you know, over a, you know, a, a period of, you know, one to two years. You know, the new normal in which we will be coming to, you know, even four to six months from now or eight months from now will be a lot different. And again, you know, some of the programs that we do look and do offer, those are what I would consider almost essential programming, you know, for our seniors and our most vulnerable populations in our community. Clearly, you know, there's no necessarily need to have a, you know, concerts in the park when, you know, this epidemic is happening at its current stage. But, you know, if we are looking, you know, for cuts, the one area in which we have our biggest slice to look at is in personnel. And that's where I, you know, it asks for us to, as we look at that, is, you know, we do things in a measured approach and we do things in, in, in phases. So we can kind of look at, you know, what reasonably needs to happen versus what has to happen. So I'll leave that and I look forward to having a discussion, whether it's next week or two weeks from now, whatever the case would be.
All right, thank you. Vice mayor, yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
This is Alejandra again. Sorry.
Sorry about that.
I, I just want to make clear, the last thing I would look at cutting would be personnel, of course. That would be a major concern. I do want to look at if we can get a detailed list of what we spend for each event, like concerts in the park, the parade, all these type of events that we have for the next meeting, so we could have them listed. So we have an idea of exactly, more or less, how much we spend for all these events, because again, personnel would be the last thing I would want to look at. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilwoman Alejandra Avila. At this point, council members, anyone else wishing to share any words?
Uh, Mayor, just one last, I, I don't know where the, the chief left his reorganization. I know there was a meeting on it. But if we could bring it up to the council at the next meeting, he can talk about it and we could decide to approve it or not. I just think from talking to him and reading his report, there's, that's a place to start. That's already been evaluated and potentially start to look at cost savings there. So if we could take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. We could bring it back to the next council meeting.
It's, I was just going to say that send out 7 o'clock agenda, please.
Yeah.
So if, if I could, we've broken that reorganization up into two parts to expedite things because the assistant chief position of that required a first and second reading and, and if approved tonight, it won't be effective for 30 days. So at the next meeting, we will have the second phase of that reorganization presented to you. And then, if approved, everything will fall into place at about the same time.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Then we'll deal with that at the 7 o'clock meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, go ahead. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, at this point, we'll give it back to Rose Pram. Is Rose there?
I think, Mayor, I think that was it. That was the last part was for the city council to have discussion and feedback. And we will take this information. We will work on some plans. And we will reschedule a meeting within the next week or two. And we'll probably even have another study session at the first meeting next month on the same topic and get more information. And I'll have some discussion with you also on this in closed session.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
So if I could, we will, Mayor, if you want to take us into closed session, what we'll have to do is sign out and there's a second meeting notice that we'll need to sign in for the closed session.
Okay, sounds good. We're signing out of this one then.
Wait, hold on, Mayor, is that the same password or?
I believe it is a separate meeting and Mark, is that the same password?
No, different password. Look at the, look at the invitation. They will show the second password for that closed session.
Okay, otherwise, Mark, I'll be calling you. Bye, guys.
Help me out getting this. All right, thank you, people. I'm getting out of.
Mark, Mark, this is Robert Tafoya. I have 669-900-6833 is the number. Is that right?
Okay, Robert, say it again.
I have 69900-6833 as the meeting ID and then the, the other number is 700-380-721.
You have that number?
Robert, perhaps you don't want to say the password.
Yeah, Mark, we should be giving out the closed information.
Okay, we'll be able to see who's on there. What's the ID number?
By text, Mark.
I have the Zoom information. I'll text it to everybody in just a minute.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.